A full, a full board now. We have a full board, so let's start the meeting. Meeting of the zoning board of appeals of Cold Spring. I'm gonna add one item to the agenda, and that is review of the minutes of the last meeting, which Karen has provided to us. But first, we'll, we'll address the public hearing. Would someone like to move that we open the public hearing?
I'll move to open it.
Yeah.
All right. I second. All in favor?
I.
All right, so we're starting our public hearing on an application for 20 Rock Street. And the applicant is Julian Cornwell. The, an announcement for this hearing appeared in the PCNR last week. And the applicant has provided a sign affidavit and has provided postmarked receipts for notifying neighbors. I've inspected the receipts and they're all in order. We have not received any comments in writing.
No.
Julian, would you like to give us an overview of your proposal?
Yes, I would love to, and forgive me, my dog just barked. Hopefully that will be no more. Yes, that'd be great. Do you mind if I share a screen to just provide some visual aid?
Not at all. Go ahead. Karen may have to. Karen, do you have to do anything for that?
I think I'd be, I think I'm okay. I see the option to do it. I'll try it out and see how it goes. Okay. Can you guys see my screen?
Yeah.
Great.
Yes.
Well, first of all, thank you guys so much for giving me the opportunity to make my case. I really appreciate it. It means a lot. So as you can see here, this is a survey of our property. The blue line indicates the fence that we wish to construct. I'm gonna try to zoom in on here if I can. Hopefully that, does that zoom reflect on your screen?
Yes.
Okay, great. So we intend to build a six-foot fence for the backyard, and this area here would be the variance we request to extend the six-foot fence. So that's just the first, first thing I wanted to share. And then, whoops.
Leon? Yes. While you have the site plan open, would you mind telling us the dimensions in feet of the sections that are in the side yard?
Certainly. So this area right here is 22 feet in length. And this area here is 21 feet in length.
Okay. And could you clarify at the bottom, that little, there's a little jog, a little jog right angle at the, at the other end of the fence, does that fall, where will that fall in relation to the rear, the, the line formed by the rear of the building? It looks like it's outside, like it's to the right of that line now, in the drawing.
Oh, sorry. Do you see my mouse? Is, is that the area you're discussing? Oh, right here.
That lot, yeah. Well, no, of, at the bottom of your property, at the bottom of your lot, yes.
On the west.
The other side of the house. There's that little jog where the fence takes a right angle?
Oh, yes. That would be, that's just the, the very end of the house as well. That would just be to kind of close, close in on the side of, the other side of the house. If that makes sense.
So where will the, where will that short segment be located in relation to the rear of the house?
It would be in, oh, it would just be, it would be, what's the word? Just lined up with the rear of the house, if that makes sense.
Okay, because you, you see what I'm getting at. If technically to, if, as long as it falls on the side to the left of that, of that line, then you're fine. If it falls to the right, then you need a variance, because then it's in the side yard.
Oh, forgive me. I see. Yep, that's just, that's just not great highlighting on my, but yes, the highlighter should be more over here. It would stay behind the house. It wouldn't go in front of the house.
Okay.
It wouldn't encroach that area. Yeah, sorry for the, the confusion on that. So yes, this is the, the area in question here that we wanted to discuss. Sorry, one sec, just pulling something up. All right. And then I just have a zoning district map to share with you. So down here is Rock Street. This is our property right here. And just let me know if you guys can't follow my, my mouse or anything. So although our house at 20 Rock Street resides in the R1 residential district, our property sits between two B1 business district driveways along its western and eastern sides. So this is the western side, and this is the eastern side right here. So in addition to the traffic on the eastern driveway, which we see right here, this is our home right here. There are commercial parking spaces running adjacent to the driveway noted here. These commercial driveways are daily thoroughfares for Main Street workers and tenants. And such constant activity is disruptive and potentially dangerous. Here's another angle from our home of the driveway. We fear constructing anything less than six feet would increase safety hazards for our child when playing in the yard, rendering the side portion of the yard unusable space. Because of the surrounding traffic, there is a real chance an accident could arise if our son managed to get over the fence. Here's some more pictures. This is a wider view from inside our home of the variance in question right here. A six-foot privacy fence would be significantly more difficult for a child to jump over. We've also found trash discarded on the side of the house, particularly in this area that we think maybe just be coming from traffic going in and out. We think that a taller fence would prevent, prevent littering. Here's some more photographs. It's a tighter one. In addition, strict application of the village rule in our case would result in a six-foot fence in the back of the house and a four-foot fence along the short section in question on the side of the house. So if you imagine this is the full length of the side of our home, we intend to put the six-foot fence back here where permitted, but if we didn't receive the variance, it would be four feet here. We feel this would be unsightly and not preserve the character and charm the village drives for. And a congruous six-foot fence would be more aesthetically appealing to the neighbors. We've lived in Cold Spring for about six months now. And have already become friendly with our neighbors. We do not feel that the higher fence would be negatively impactful on their relationships. One of our primary reasons for moving here is to be a part of the community, and we retain, intend to remain neighborly. By requesting this variance, we are trying to achieve what the village describes in chapter 134-1D, which is to quote, blend and harmonize with the surrounding countryside, thereby making a more pleasant, relaxed, and helpful community for all. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Julian.
Oh, let me turn the screen share off for you, just so you're not staring at, unless you guys want this up.
I, I have a question. Did, would you take any pictures of of where the side yard fences from the street? Like if you were going down the street, what you would see as you look towards your, your, your property?
Um, I may have. I, I was kind of wary to go down there because it is a private driveway. I didn't want to trespass.
No, but I mean, from like the sidewalk, looking at, or?
Yeah, let's see. I think, I think I do have some. Let me, I'm just skimming through, and let me know if anything's, you'd like me to stop on. So this one right here is kind of, this is from Rock Street.
Yeah, and your house is on the left there.
Yes. I believe this is the widest picture I have. I'm happy to scrub to the next one to, to confirm. This is kind of a tighter one down there. And this is a little bit more from the other angle on Rock Street, so kind of looking west more, if you were to walk farther down Rock Street. And here's another one that's a bit wider from, from Rock Street.
I guess I was thinking more of like picture of the front of your house, and then you could point out where the fence would be. That's.
Oh, the front of the house.
Yeah.
Oh, yeah. I, I can, I can pull up on, on the camera if that's possible. My, my wife over here has a picture of the house, if that, if that's permitted.
Sure, yeah, that's be fine. It is, it is a good point.
Yeah, so here's a, let me, I'll, I'll turn the script, the screen share off so you can better see it. Here we go. Okay, thanks. So this is the front of the house. And I'm sure I can find some on my computer. I just don't want to, you know.
No, but that's helpful.
Okay. Yeah, sorry, I don't have one more easily accessible, but I am happy to scrub through if, if you'd like.
So if I understand correctly, the the, the last segment of the fence in the side yard will, will run perpendicular across the end of the driveway. Is that correct?
Perpendicular across the end of our driveway?
Yeah.
Yes, that is correct.
So, all right, so all right. So it forms a sort of, sort of end to the driveway?
Yes.
Or in it will have a car in front of it much of the time?
Yes.
Do you, there's a concrete walk running alongside the house. Do you plan to have a gate between the end of the fence and the house?
Yes.
But the gate would be under, would be four feet or less?
Uh, that would be also six feet, part of the.
Okay, so. All right, so. Yeah, that's not shown on the site plan, but we can, we can have that, that fact. The fence essentially will extend right up to the house.
Yeah, I can, I can share again, just so we can review that and see. Yeah, so the, the gate, the proposed gate would go right here where the, where the gate posts noted for the concrete walk.
So just to refresh some of the things that were brought up in the presentation, of course, in the back, the back of the lot, in your backyard, facing the commercial buildings, the back end of the commercial buildings that line Main Street, you can have a six-foot fence. That, that's allowed. So it's, as you indicated, the entire length of the side, the side of your backyard property up to your driveway on the east side, and then jogging across to the house as well as the side yard, the entire length on the west side is all being sawed at six foot, whereas normally it should be four foot. And I, I do have to say that, you know, we have, you know, I've been on the board for about 15 years, and and there, there are a lot of situations where, you know, some families have, you know, young children and everything, and it hasn't been a basis, you know, you know, as well as dogs and animals. It has not been a basis by which, you know, fences larger than four foot have been granted. In, in some cases, some family members, you know, seeking more privacy, they would put a fence around and then put up, you know, abreviated trees or something to gain additional privacy. For myself, you know, trying to get privacy, I have seven-foot, eight-foot privet fences, privates, privates, privet bushes in lieu of, you know, a large fence. And, and I certainly understand the idea of litter. I'm right on Fair Street across from Mayor's Park, and with all the hikers coming here from off the train and the park use and everything. I'm constantly picking up papers around my house, but that's part of, you know, where I bought into. So I'm just saying from past history that it's been a hard sell. The, the, the board, the, the boards in the past have all looked at wanting to maintain open space and not a compartmentalized type set of yards as if in boxes. And so that's why, you know, there was a lot of push, a lot of push, a lot of push, and in the end, they permitted a six-foot back wall. And you know, along the back property line, but you know, they would not see to it to allow it to run all around the property. And, and many people, go ahead.
Let me just inject here. I believe, we, we talked about this when you were absent previously, but under the revised fence regulations, which went into effect last year, an owner may install a six-foot fence around the entire rear yard, any, any of the sides of the rear yard as of right. So in an application like this, the only portion requiring a variance is, is the segments in the side yard.
So the language is the entire rear yard and just not the rear yard?
Exactly, yeah, yeah. They, all side, every side, all four sides of the rear yard may have a six-foot fence. Rear yard is defined as everything from the rear of the house back. So he's okay up to the point where the fence enters the side yard, crosses that line, crosses the line formed by the rear of the house and enters the side yard. There's a drawing in the, in the new, in the new law that makes that clear.
There actually is a drawing in the, yeah, in, in, in the code.
Yeah, you could, you could check it online right now. It's, it's the chapter called fences.
Yeah.
It's got a really clear.
Right. I'm looking that up now while you guys continue to speak. What's the section?
It's, well, if you go to the, on, on the website, the, the, called the village code, it's alphabetical by topic, and look under F for fences.
And that's what I'm gonna do now while you guys continue to talk. Thank you.
Okay, but John makes a great point about children. I'm not persuaded by the point about children because under New York state law, pools, swimming pools are, are required to have a fence no higher than four feet on, on the grounds that a pool is considered safe from child access as long as it has a fence of at least four feet. So four feet seems to be the standard for minimum safety for children.
Okay, is there, does the having the business district driveways, does that impact just in terms of they are, they aren't, you know, they are busy?
Yeah, that is, that is irrelevant. I, I find that point relevant and important because historically, the board has looked favorably on variance requests when it's a case of an R1 property directly adjacent to a B1 property, especially where the B1 property involves parking, driveway, vehicle traffic, because it's very clear that that's an exceptional, an exceptional nuisance for the occupant of the R1 property.
And Julian, on that note, would you share with us, I mean, we've got a good description of the, the businesses, the traffic flow. Do US Mail, delivery services, those other vehicles pass down that lane as well?
Um, the, yeah. I know that at least there's foot traffic from them that go down those lanes. I believe, I, I mean, I have seen like FedEx trucks at least come down.
Okay, yeah. I think that's in context to what we, what we're just referencing, that's an important note too, that it's not just a private lane. That there's deliveries and larger vehicles.
Yes.
So in other words, Julian, is it fair to say the service vehicles, like any bit, any vehicles servicing those properties on Main Street? Do they have to pass through this driveway, such as contractors, plumbers, et cetera?
Yes.
I think it's, in my experience on that, it operates like a road. It's more than a driveway. It services enough different businesses and households that, and, and there's parking on the side that it really, sir, it's private, but like shared by many that it, it serves more like a road. I have to say also that we, so again, I happen to have lived in the apartment that used that, that parking lot, and we were, we were hit driving out of the parking lot by one of the cars backing up from the, the cars that are parked along that side. So it's, it's a quite congested area, right? In that, that space of the side yard. So I think it's, it is, it's not a typical configuration of a, of a side yard. It's, it's, as it, in my, and, and I think that the, that the village zoning plan really makes it clear that it's kind of an island surrounded by driveways and parking lots in a way that also is, you know, much busier, and I think really reduces the privacy that most of us enjoy in our back inside yards, even without a, a fence. I always noticed that walking by of like, wow, their backyard is right. I can see right into it. I mean, it's very public. So I, I just, the context of knowing that area, I think it's, it is not typical of the houses here.
And, and to add on that, as I know the area too, the the spaces, the parking, I believe that I saw in your pictures, and correct me if I'm wrong, Julian, but I, I don't believe it's regular parking as if it's a neighbor that you're going to see, but it's, it could be short-term, short-term rental to those that are working in some of the shops that are just part-time or seasonal employees. So it's not a, hey, that's my neighbor parking there either.
Yeah, 100%. I was gonna note that. In terms of neighborliness, I do feel that the buildings that are overlooking the requested variance are not buildings where neighbors live, but these are actually short-term rentals, and I do know that these cars are often employees that are going to Main Street.
Okay.
Okay, this is a public hearing, so I want to see if there are any members of the public here who would like to express a, a view on the application. Okay, no, no response, so. Board members will continue with any questions or comments.
Yeah, so I, I can see how they updated the code. Obviously, this was done like a few months back. And they, for the first time, put a diagram in for what they're trying to propose is allowable or not allowable. That, that was never the case before, especially since the fact it was disdeemed uniform at four-foot height. You know, restriction of anything higher than that was not permitted. So I see where Eric has pointed out where the issues are with anything that's forward of the rear back building structure, right? And of course, what's, what's jogging across in front on the easterly side of the building across the front of the driveway? You know, and I, I hear, and I, I inspected the site, so I know what it, it's like, and you know, also that the village map points out how you know, there's access both sides of the house to village sort of business parking to the rear, the, you know, business structures that are along Main Street. And so that makes it a little bit, that, that distinguishes it from other types of private properties that just simply have residential all around them. Again, this would be, it, it's not on a business where it's not, you know, it's, it's along a business-type driveway, but not up against a business. So this, we don't often get this. This, this, we have not really had that often, if not, if I can remember at all. We, we've permitted a six-foot fence in front of everything else. And the argument here for the fence that goes straight across forward of the drive, right off the back of the driveway is basically for the child, and the only exception I see that may be considerate in this case is the fact that the driveway to the east again, is not just servicing a private driveway for a singular residence, but it's actually utilized by many vehicles and many structures, the backside of them, which front on Main Street. So that would be the only sec, exception I could personally see in this so far, and I think it's the only thing that's been mentioned, if I'm not correct.
Did you?
Go ahead, Mary Ann.
I, I was just wondering is, did you consider making the backyard enclosed by a six-foot fence? Looking at the safety of your child to look at it, to not include the little, is that an upside down and backwards L shape? That is, that requires the variance. In other words, having I'm not just gonna describe this very well, but you know, having the, the part of the fence running perpendicular to the house be where the house ends on that side? Does that make sense?
I think so. Are you suggesting this piece, not having this be six feet, but having everything else, everything else be six feet?
Have, moving that piece.
Oh, up.
Yes, that's what I mean.
To the back, to the back of the house line?
Yes.
We did, but then we, then we felt that this would be unusable space as a result, because it would be open to to the drive.
My thoughts, and, and sometimes I hesitate to make that, a, a comment about creating unusable space because and, and pardon me for referencing something that made and a, a couple of us often talk about green, the amount of asphalt that's being put down, but at the point in time, that becomes unusable. I started looking at it as, oh, well, then that's the likely, the next step is that it gets paved. And I know I can't refer to the, you know, the concern of what might happen or a future owner might do, but I look at it from preserving the community in that way, knowing also with some history back here that there's already quite a bit of flooding runoff. So more asphalt personally doesn't appeal to me. So that's why I, I reference that, probably not for context with the, the the actual variance test, but just from an outside point of view and thinking about the preservation of, of any kind of sponge-like green space that's gonna soak up water.
But I would think that's, that's a good point, yet at the same time, a little bit speculative. You, you really just don't know what a person would do, and, and the issue is the fact that this may be rendered a little bit unusable. Many property owners could make that claim, and we would have a hard time distinguishing one case from next, I, I would think in part. This does have the business route, but in order to accomplish what they're looking for, I, I don't think it's necessary to bring the fence that far forward, and you know, like for instance, creating unusual, unusable space, like for instance, I put my shed way off the property line. I didn't do it because I wanted to. I did it because I put it 12 feet off on the sides and 25 feet off the back. And it created unusable space around it. But I did it to conform with the zoning code. And to, and to make, for good neighbors. And I think that it would be a hard thing to, to explain away, you know, why we granted in one case and not another. Again, I get, there is the business driveway, but at the same point, it, it can, it can be kept where it's designed to be along the rear side of the house and accomplishes the same purpose. It just renders in quotes, some unusable space. And accomplishes the same purpose, it just renders in quotes some unusable space.
Julian, um do you have other windows on the first floor? Behind the that would fall behind the fence as as you proposed the fence. Maybe do your photographs allow us to see that uh whether um windows in the house?
Yeah, we we have three windows, I believe, that view out onto that area, let's see, you can kind of see it um. So this guy right here. Uh which is the back and then this this window as well. Um I can try to get a different picture, but you can kind of get a sense, this is the um.
Okay.
The back of the house and this this is a different room and then this window right here upstairs.
So you have, you have two first floor windows that would fall, that would be protected by the proposed fence if it was six feet. Um so I would, I would say to my mind, that's an argument in favor of the proposal. Of the the fence, the six foot fence will be serving not only to um to shelter the yard. But also the house um. Whereas otherwise, with a four foot fence or no fence on the side yard, the house is subject to. Uh a loss of privacy in those windows due to the business traffic going by and and basically looking in the windows.
Yeah, that's that's true, when we're sitting especially down here, which is like our sitting room, um we find we need to pull the blinds off and because there is quite a bit of traffic. Whether it be vehicles or foot traffic that goes by, right, and it feels like it's very close.
But there's also a lot of.
I do see that as a.
But there's also a lot of.
Go ahead.
In front of many other residences, you know, uh that were really up close and the residences are almost flush to the road. So, you know, it it is, it's an arguable point, but at the same time, it's again hard to differentiate if we slide onto the fact of the windows, I mean. With regards to, you know, that there might be, like, I have thousands of people walking in in front of my house, you know, every every weekend.
Yeah, and and I hear and I respect that point, but the I think the point that that Eric. And was pointing out and what Julia referenced in the workshop and then in the introduction is. He's got three sides of his location and I don't know, well, I know of three that are surrounded by. So the reference to him being an island, I I think is, because I I think there's another thorough, pretty heavily trafficked road on. The opposite side of the lane we're speaking to, right?
Yeah, right behind me, I'm happy to show you other pictures, I know it's not, you know, on the table for discussion, but if that helps, I'd be happy to show other angles of the house.
Especially, yeah, I totally understand the point of the island, I mean, I I know, I know I was over there, I looked and. And I can see everything that go is going on over there. And 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 those circumstances, you know, go particularly to this this property, there's no doubt. Uh but again, you you also have to consider the purpose of the law. And the purpose of the law is to allow other neighbors around you to have a more open feel. To the homes around them rather than the homes being somewhat closed off. And uh so there there's a play of things going in both directions and particularly particularly what the law is seeking for, you know. Trying to accomplish, uh that that that's why for the longest period of time, it's just four foot fences. Took a long time to get this thing done, or many complaints and. And again, the idea was they want to keep the front of the hot homes in an open appearance. So that, again, there there are issues that go, you know, in both directions and but the the law also has to be sort of. Viewed and the um impediment to the owner has to really supersede that. That idea of what the law is trying to accomplish for its neighborhoods.
I would just uh reiterate to you that this building is a short term rental, so the in terms of neighbors, it's a transient, you know. Guests, as is this brick building here.
And that's current, that's the building to your east, correct?
Yeah.
Okay, and but that doesn't necessarily, that would necessarily always be the case, you know, because that use could change. Uh somebody could come in and buy the house and just build it all into a single residence. Um I I get the point that currently it's that way. Uh but the use as a. Like, for instance, the use of a designated residential area would run with the land. But the use as a three or, you know, two or three uh family structure wouldn't necessarily. You run with the land, I mean, you would have the right to do it. But once it would be converted over to a private singular use, if somebody wanted a big house. Uh that use wouldn't be really available anymore.
I think, though, we have to be careful because as I was appropriately pointed out that I was speculating about what if the drive increases.
That's a good, that's a good point.
We can't downgrade, you know, the concern of what others may do, so.
He, it goes, see, it goes all ways, you see what I'm saying, but but the important thing is a board, we have to ask these questions and look at it. So.
Is there any chance?
Could you go back to the photo?
Oh, sure, uh which one, Eric?
Uh the one looking toward the street from the looking from the backyard toward the toward the street.
Oh, uh this guy.
Yeah, there's another one where that's it, now let me just throw out um. As for the board to to consider, there is a third possibility here. And that would be to approve a six foot fence on the side that parallels the the driveway. That parallels the business district and and not approve it. On the on the that when the fence makes a right angle and comes back toward the house to not approve six foot there. And the the logic would be that the unique nuisance lies in the B one, the driveway. But facing the front, um there is uh much less impact from the B one district and in. And mainly, the impact comes from the street itself, which is not a unique nuisance and can be used as a basis for a six foot fence.
That would be viable for everything that you've just stated. And again, I think that the uh the uh any decision we come to. I I don't think it can at all really rely on the fact that the applicant wants to create a certain level of fence. For the fact that they have, you know, young children. Uh and as you I mentioned earlier, Eric, or if they had dogs they wanted to keep within the premises. So what you're suggesting there would be a viable uh view of resolving the application. You know, just like he said, go ahead.
It also serves the purpose of keeping sightlines open for passersby on the street. Um who are entitled to um who are entitled to uh opens, open views. Um it prevents having a wall.
Right. I walked the street today, I looked up, I went up and down the street. I noticed that there were a few and I don't know whether they had ever had the um. Uh granting of an application or anything, but there are a few six foot fence along the side of the properties dividing the properties. But there were really no, I I didn't see any six foot fences that go straight across from the. A side boundary of the property towards the front of a structure. Whether it be the front or the, you know, halfway up the side of the structure, I did not see anything of that nature.
We had a um a six foot fence case up on um Morris Avenue, right? By old Whistling Willies and feel like it was a similar conclusion that the the nuisance was on the side. By the um parking lot and then um as uh but not along the main street. So I I know there isn't sort of a precedence, but um my memory of it is that it was a similar logic.
But that was the reasoning and there's. And our purpose is, I think, to try to find, we first have to do our best. To look at what the law is trying to direct us to do, then we have to look at the applicant and say, you know, how do we accept? The applicant's position from every every other applicant. And I think right now, uh I can understand perhaps if the. Fence runs a little longer beyond the back uh end of the house on the eastern side. Uh with the parking there and with multifamily use and on top of. Uh access being sought all the way to the back of the buildings along Main Street. Uh I I can see, you know, all that being an issue, but in order to honor some of the. Um the 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 purpose of the law with regards to keeping these fences lower, I think the the portion of the fence that comes from the eastern. Boundary line towards the house should be at most, you know, four feet, which is authorized in the first place.
The only thing I'll add um is uh, you know, in having this four feet here, you could, I mean, the drive. The drive is still, the business district driveway still starts back here, so I mean, you will still see it right here. For what it's worth, just to just share that.
You know, the points are all well taken, I think it's a weighing of really everything that has to be considered. That's really what it comes down to and and how to, how do we distinguish your situation from everything else? You know, and 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 what kind of impacts are we trying to avoid, uh again, it's all, it's a weighing in in this case, you know. It and the law recognizes that.
Yeah.
Yeah, as um as John is implying and as the board members know. Every ZBA is required to grant no more than the minimum variance necessary for the applicant to achieve. The goal desired, so um we are supposed to be ruthless in seeing in in. In um denying any aspect of the variance that can be done without. While still allowing the applicant to achieve basically the goal, and so that's the question for the board now is whether. Whether the applicant here um sufficiently will sufficiently obtain the desired benefit. If the front part of the fence parallel to the street is only four feet.
And nothing here is to be difficult, we we were trying to do everything that we do for everybody else and not give anybody else something that we. Uh haven't given to somebody else, you know, it 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 all has to be considered and uh. You know, our job is not necessarily easy, but uh these decisions have to be made, they're presented to us. And um and we just try to do the best we can with regards to what the. Village Board has has set for us, you know, as far as the, like, for instance, I have. Once I announced earlier, like, it used to be four foot fences all around, I just thought it was the linear back fence of the back wall that was permitted at six. And then, you know, Eric says, well, no, actually, if you read it, it's really the whole backyard and it's actually a diagram, soon as I saw that. I have no complaint, it's the law, you know, and so, you know, we're not here inventing the law or trying to rewrite it, we're just trying to follow it. And we're, again, exactly what Eric said, uh our our purpose is to really to to give the minimum variance that's really. Necessary in in the circumstances, so.
No, that's all, I I completely respect uh the process you guys go through, and I appreciate you guys having this dialogue.
Heck, we would like to have everybody be our friends and just give everybody what they want.
Be a wonderful world.
Yeah.
What to? Is it fair to ask the other board members at this point where you're leaning with regard to? The the three options, I believe there are basically three options, number one, to grant the the request in full. Meaning six foot uh for the both segments in the side yard. Number two, allow six foot just for the side of the fence that parallels the B one driveway. And and require that the the other leg, the 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 section parallel to the street be four feet. And number three, to deny the the request entirely and require that all all segments in the side yard be four feet. Any leanings in the other, among the other board members?
I really like the compromise of having the portion of it running perpendicular to the house be four feet. Because otherwise, I would lean in the direction of denying it because I believe that there would be. Other acceptable alternatives such as a hedge or other kinds of things that could achieve the results that he's looking for.
And I'm probably, I am, I am more in the grant full, but that's with the context and contingency of. The the window sightline to not me, not not Rock Street. But to the industry and the flow of commercial traffic, even my thoughts of, wow, okay, so the way. Recycling trash goes out to Main Street from those locations is now going to go out to Rock Street. Because of the um the the need with the new protocol, uh so I'm picturing. More traffic in actuality and more sightline um that. Doesn't constitute a typical side yard, so that's why I'm falling in the grant of um full in this case.
Um I'm fully convinced that the um, this is a an exceptional circumstance. Of this kind of island surrounded by the B one district and um so feel very. I am for granting a variance along the the driveway, I guess I'm a little bit. I I mixed on a um on the front, on that kind of compromise of um of of grand. And I'm kind of leaning toward the four feet in the front. Um I think there's a justification for that combination.
You know, I think Mary Ann brought up a a very good point that, you know, uh the border uh for privacy. That it that that comes forward of the back line of the house along driveway, you know, could theoretically be made. A a hedge, you know, uh that we had a property that owner that was up right across from uh Town Hall. Phillips Town Hall that was looking for four foot fence all the way, I mean, a six foot fence all the way around. And, you know, we denied it. Um, you know, because it wasn't something we had really granted to anybody else and for the fact that they didn't show circumstances by which. Their situation was distinguishable from others or there were complications with regards to. Certain type of traffic or business traffic or, you know, people not being there, but so we denied it and then they put up their vegetation. They for their privacy, they wanted the privacy and they did the vegetation, which we suggested. So, you know, I'm leaning two ways, uh one way I'm leaning is just to grant the, yeah, I mean, I wouldn't have to grant anything. It would simply uh suggest that the six foot fence go just around the backyard as proposed. And then you would put vegetation right along the area along the driveway that would act as both a screen and. Just just serve as a buffer, uh the the I as far as I would be willing probably to go. Uh and I'm just trying to make sure and can I think at least, you know. Justify uh the higher fence forward of the line is because of the nature of the driveway. And the type of traffic that's going over, but I would not be, uh I would not go past the law. As far as that front fence is concerned, that jogs from the eastern property line to uh to the house. I would stay with four foot. So that that's the way I would look at it.
Okay, um thank you all, um I guess I would say that I am leaning toward the compromise. Um for several reasons, um. Th- this board has many times granted six foot fences in similar circumstances and I. Yes, every case is unique, so no case determines a subsequent case, but we have many times. Where R one lies next to a B one and especially where there's traffic, vehicle traffic driveways. There are two on Furnace Street alone that within my time on the board that on opposite sides of Furnace Street, in fact, facing each other. Uh both cases of R one next to a a a commercial driveway and we allowed a six foot fence in both cases. And we allowed a six foot fence in both cases. Um, so um, vegetation is not, uh, it has not been imposed in every case. Um, and second, I would point out that uh, the purpose of a ZBA is to protect the interest of the public. And um, I, I am a little bothered by anytime I see a six foot fence parallel to a street. Um, you're, you're really presenting a blank face, a barrier to the public pedestrians. Uh, this is a street that is quite um, the houses are quite close to the street and there's a real feeling of, of neighborliness, closeness, um, of, of village, um, it holds village. And I've, I've, I feel like six foot fence directly parallel to the sidewalk is um, goes against that character and it is, um, diminishes the experience of the public to just a slight degree. So um, and for, of, of the third point, the, the third, the reason I would, I, I lean, that, that I would lean toward accepting a six foot fence parallel to the driveway is it's, it is merely extending a six foot fence that he already has a right to build along the, the whole rear yard, the whole side of the rear yard. So there's already going to be a six foot fence, so we're that issue is, is just an extension of what will be there. So I feel like that is um, that's an, that's a tolerable, uh, it's a tolerable exception to um, something like that. Extending what is already there or, or already going to be there. So for those reasons, I'm leaning toward compromise. I guess from your other comments, Mary Ann and Laura were also leaning toward compromise and correct me if I'm wrong, John was either way, John was either full deny or compromise and Heath was toward, was leaning toward full approval of the application. Is that correct? Um, am I summarizing correctly?
And that's accurate, my understanding. Agreed.
Okay, well, um, if I balance those out, um, they tend to fall on, 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 um, the average out on the, on the, um, compromise position. Uh, would board members be comfortable then with a with a resolution on the compromise position?
Yes.
Yes.
Yeah.
Do you wanna, shall we go through the, um, the five factors on that basis?
Sure.
Sure. Okay, so I will, one at a time, and Julie and we, um, ZBAs are required to take into account five specific factors and each one has to be discussed individually in relation to the application, and that's what we're going to do now. Um, so what we're, what we're considering is the idea of allowing the six foot fence in the segment that runs parallel to the B one driveway. And then when the fence makes a right turn and comes back toward the house, we do not allow uh, the six, we do not allow the variance there. We require the fence to be no more than four feet, which is the maximum, the standard maximum for a side yard. So, um, the first factor is um, whether, i- i- if we, if we allow what I just stated, would an undesirable change be produced in the character of the neighborhood or a detriment to nearby properties? John, you wanna consider that?
Yeah, I would only say more, uh, probably marginally so because I think that, that buffer that we're looking for, uh, that goes of further forward from the back property or the building line to the front could be made with vegetation that screens. Um, that, that's my feeling. You know, of course, there is a fence.
That comment.
Go ahead.
That comment might be more pertinent when we talk about whether, um, other, there are other feasible ways to achieve the goal.
So is there a detriment you're asking with regards to the way we're looking at it right now?
Sorry, I didn't, you were breaking up.
The question, whether or not the detriment, we're, that, that the proposal is a detriment, correct?
Yes.
Right.
Yes, the, does the idea of a six foot fence on the side um, create a, a detriment to nearby properties or an undesirable change in the character of the neighborhood?
Uh, I, I don't think it creates a detriment to the individual uh, property owner, but I think in general it would to the surrounding property owner, uh, because it just sort of cuts off just view shed of just the, you know, open basic properties. I, I, I think there's, but you know, it's, it's, it's sort of, I don't want to say it's minimal. There's some impact.
Okay. Laura?
Well, I think the, the impact is minimized, given that it's a four foot fence along Rock Street. Um, and uh, you know, the area where the variance is um, where we're allowing the variances, B one driveway. Um, so I thi- I think the impact is minimized.
Right, Heath?
I think due to as Laura stated, the B one drive, I do not see an undesirable change or a detriment.
So no detriment.
No detriment.
And Mary Ann?
I, I agree with Heath and Laura, just because it's a, essentially a commercial driveway, that it's basically a detriment.
Uh, Eric, I think to add to the points that have just been made, let me just mention that there are some fences that run the side of properties there in those, in that, in that block, so that would go against a, a, a view of detriment, I, I would imagine.
Okay, yeah, that goes to the question of character of the neighborhood. You say there are already six foot fences.
There are some.
Running perpendicular to the street. Yeah.
There are, there are some.
Okay, that's a good point. And I would, um, I would, my view is that there is minimal detriment, um, because the, um, there's already going to be a, a substantial six foot fence running along the rear yard. Um, and yeah, so, um, and it will not from the street, there will be not a, a, a great impact from the street. All right, um, so the, the verdict on this point was basically uh, little or no, some, uh, some, but mostly minimal. Now, question two is whether the benefits sought by the applicant can be achieved by some method feasible, by some feasible method other than, than, that does not require variance. So can the applicant achieve the desired benefit through some feasible method that does not involve a variant? Mary Ann, what do you think? I know you, you love this question.
Yes, my favorite. That's, that's why I've started asking people if they've considered the alternative. Um, what? What? Yeah, um, yeah, I think the fourth, the forfeit along the street what I keep hearing an echo of my voice, um, is a good alternative.
Can I just suggest, maybe we, my gosh, mute if we're not speaking to try to get rid of the echo?
Okay, I'm talking again and there's no echo. Okay, um, and as usual, I'm confused by this one. Um, without the compromise, I'd say, yes, there, there are, are other alternatives with the compromise that we're talking about with four foot along the street. I'm not a hundred percent convinced that a hedge wouldn't be helpful and at least go towards the interests of the applicant and um, that there still could be a sizable yard for a child a sizable yard um, without that small area. So is it reasonable? You know, I, I really feel fifty fifty about it. Um, and I don't know how you can consider that, Eric.
Okay, um, Heath?
Okay, let's see if we get this echo. Um, I think due to the, the option of just the six feet on the side that we've already minimalized, minimized and marginalized the uh, whether or not the benefits sought by the app, applicant can be achieved in some other method, I think because I, I refer back to the B one and the flow of traffic. So I don't see this as um, heavily influencing me. I, I feel like it's marginal.
Yeah, I feel like it's marginal.
Okay, Laura?
Waiting for Eric to uh, mute, because I think that's where the echo is coming from. Uh, I, um, again, I think because this is, we are, um, it's a partial variance, it's a variance for one part of it that, um, that addresses one alternative, right? Um, I think the fact that we, that the ZBA has given variances for six foot fences suggests that we don't enforce that uh, a hedge is a, isn't, is a necessary alternative, kind of respecting uh, um, both a choice, whether it's cost or, or other reasons why there's an importance to, to the selection of a fence over a hedge. Um, I think that, that matters. Um, and then uh, Eric, you made the point of it, that it's a short continuation of an otherwise allowed for a six foot fence. Uh, so that there's a logic to um, uh, continuing the fence along, um, along the full extent.
Thanks. John, do you have a view on whether the applicant has a feasible alternative?
Yeah, I guess I come back from the old school, you know, from uh, the, the, all the boards that I was, been on that preceded this board. Uh, and they, they all went and went along with the vegetation type uh, screening and, and, and I agree with that, you know, I, I look at like a place like Nantucket that doesn't allow wa- uh, walls except for in business districts to be over uh, six feet, and that's all relative to what's going on in those business districts. Uh, but um, so this, this, this is a close case because there's sort of a symbi- uh, symbiotic relationship with the business around them as well as being in a residential area. Um, so I, I, I can see in my estimation that, that a vegetation could solve the problem and that they stick with the, the, uh, what, what's permitted. And um, but, you know, I look at everything, I, I listen to what the applicant is, is trying to accomplish. Uh, and, you know, I'm willing to try to work with that applicant. Uh, our Nantucket, they all have six to eight, ten foot private fences separating, uh, uh, bushes separating everything. So that's where the, you know, the reasoning came from in the past, and that was other board members who I listened to and ended up developing that kind of a viewpoint. And, and I, I repeated it in my own backyard here in Cold Spring. So that's it. So I think there's other alternatives. But uh, I'm, the compromise is reasonable to me, uh, what we've arrived at.
Thanks, um, I agree with John. Um, I think if, if we strictly go by the letter of this factor, um, we, I, I, I feel like I have to, I have to say there is a feasible alternative and the hedge is in fact a feasible alternative of accomplishing almost all of the benefit. It may not, a hedge may, a hedge may not be as as solid as a, as a fence, but it is still gives much or, or nearly all of the same benefit. Um, or it can potentially depending on the type of hedge. So, um, but that doesn't mean that the application is, is doomed, but it's just, I think on this one factor, there is definitely an alternative. But, so our comments were mixed on that. Um, some said there is a feasible alternative, others said not significant. Um, and it, and it is relevant, as Laura mentioned, that we have not in the past enforced the hedge alternative. Now, number three, um, whether this, whether the, the area variance in question is substantial. Now, keep in mind, all we're talking about is um, that segment running parallel to the driveway, the B one driveway, going from four feet to six feet, that change. Is that, um, allowing that exception, is that in itself, that, just that, that, that change, is that substantial? Um, and so let's, uh, let's start with Laura.
I, um, it is not, um, I don't, I, I'm trying to think of some sort of in-between word. I mean, it's not, it's not two feet. It's, you know, it's, it's um, twenty, twenty feet, but um, but again, it's, it's um, a much smaller, given the new regulations, right, the new um, code, it's, it's a much smaller variance request. And, and again, we've, we've minimized the request from, or we've minimized the variance from what was originally requested. Um, so I think it's I don't know what that is, low to medium. Moderate, how about moderate?
Moderate.
All right, great, yeah. Heath, would you like to weigh in on this, whether it's substantial?
Um, I echo, echo Laura's moderate comment. Um, it is substantial, but it's moderate because of the circumstances.
John, your comment?
Uh, I understand Laura's point that in contrast to the uh, permitted higher, uh, six foot around the backyard, that it's not so substantial, but for the fact that we're really looking at what is allowed in the front yard area or from the rear of the back uh, building towards the front, I would say it is substantial, but, you know, because it's two feet more. Uh, it is um, offset by the um, unusual circumstances in this case as to business traffic and, 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 and a very uh, busy driveway that serves uh, multiple spots of parking for the business district as well as uh, uh, what seems to be a two or three tenement family structure to the east. So I think it's tempered, uh, the fact that it is substantial in, in, in measure, but tempered by the circumstances. And the reason why we're actually allowing it, but that's, that's my viewpoint.
Great, thank you. Uh, Mary Ann?
I am here for some reason, my video just isn't working. Um, I'd say it's a little less than moderately substantial. Um, I mean, it's, it's what, twenty feet of two feet? I mean, you know, I, I, I don't think, I think, I think it's a little less than moderately substantial.
Okay, thanks. Um, I would, um, my view is that, um, as usual, I would make a distinction between the numeric, whether it's substantial numerically and whether it's substantial in its effect. Numerically, it is substantial, but we're talking about a fifty percent increase going from four to six. But I think in effect it is it's my it's it's only mild, as others said, moderately or mildly. It will have only a moderate impact. So the the weight on of views here was basically moderately substantial, but but offset, so it it has an effect, but the effect is tempered and offset. Question number four is whether the proposed variance will have an adverse effect or impact on the physical or environmental conditions in the neighborhood or district. All right. John, John, what do you think about this?
Well, the house, it's a pretty open area out there when I looked at it today, but I don't think it's I don't think it's going to have an impact on the environmental aspects. There's other similar fences in the neighborhood.
Similar fences in the neighborhood.
And so I don't think this would go against the applicant. I I believe there it might be minor impact because some of the visual is lost. But it's in this case acceptable under all the circumstances. And the fact that it is allowable to that height of six feet in the backyard area, so minimal.
Your area, so minimal.
Thank you, Heath.
Yeah, I think aesthetically, it's actually more uniform to for the continuum of the six feet. So I see it as not being negative, especially because of the B one district.
Well, that's an interesting point, actually, that I don't think anyone has stated exactly in that term that there's actually, I think it falls more under question one, undesirable change or detriment. You're saying that there is an actual aesthetic benefit to having this entire this the fence along the side being a consistent height rather than the applicant being required to step down to four feet at the side yard. So that's an that's an interesting point that I'll make I'll add that to question one, because I think it doesn't involve environmental conditions or physical conditions, but more character of the neighborhood and whether there's an undesirable change.
Thank you.
Well, that fits in under question one, Keith, you said no detriment, so that you're you're being consistent there about that aesthetic. I also think there's no no physical or environmental offense really has minimal, especially a relatively short segment, really has little chance of causing any physical or environmental effect. So I think that's one thing that goes in favor of the application. Laura, do you want to weigh in on physical or environmental impact?
I don't have anything. I agree with what's been said so far. I don't have anything more to add. Oh, I just realized.
Mary.
No, I just realized you lost Mary Ann.
It looked like she was having computer problems, perhaps.
Yeah, yeah. Okay, well. Let's I'll ask her her views if she comes back. Let's move on to number five, and that this is the question about whether the alleged difficulty was self created. And as we've discussed, that self created has a special sense here, which is to say not that the applicant caused the problem personally, but that the that the problem came about through circumstances the applicant could not have known about, could not have any other defense against. And I'll start by saying as is usually the case, this difficulty is is self created in that knew about the configuration of the properties when he bought the property. And so the applicant is is response is responsible for having accepted essentially for accepted things the way they are by virtue of buying the property in knowledge of knowledge in full knowledge of what it was like. So it is self created in my in my view. And Maria, Mary Ann, are you? Can you hear us now? Are you back online?
And I'm back and unmuted now.
And I'm back and unmuted now.
Oh, great. Okay, welcome back. We we didn't get a your comment on the question number four, whether the variance would have adverse effect or impact on physical or environmental conditions.
I would say no.
Okay, thanks. Everyone was no on that, so that question weighs in favor. And Mary Ann, we were now on question five, whether the alleged difficulty was self created. And I've just stated my opinion that it is. John, what do you think?
I agree with your points, just to keep the echoes down. The point being that the property at time of purchase, the purchaser had to be aware of the nature and setting of the property. While a lot of the stuff that goes on around that property, whether it increased or diminished, I don't know, since the property owner has been there for a year, but on the whole, you're deemed to have had notice upon purchase.
Seem to have had notice.
Okay, thanks. Laura?
I agree with Eric and John's comments.
Okay, Heath?
Yes, it's self created.
Yes, it's self created.
Mary Ann, what do you feel about the question of whether the difficulty was self created?
I believe it is self created.
All right, so everyone said yes to that, which means that the question weighs against the application, but it's a weak negative because virtually all requests for area variances do involve a self created difficulty. So looking back, question number one, undesirable change or detriment worked in favor. Question two, whether alternate feasible alternative to obtain the benefit was mixed. Question three, basically mixed, the question of whether the variance is substantial. I would call that our comments were mixed, but leaning in favor of supporting the application. And then for physical or environmental impact. There we were unanimous no, so that works in favor. And then self created worked against, and that's a weak factor. So we had two in favor, two mixed, and one opposed weekly in a week to a weak extent. Is it fair to say that on balance the board is leaning toward approving the compromise proposal? Does anyone anyone dispute that conclusion or want to argue?
I I say you're correct, what you've just said.
I say you're correct, what you've just said.
Oh, all right. Well, then I'll make a motion that we approve a modified version of the application that allows a variance along along the side parallel to the drive to the B one driveway, six feet maximum along that segment, but no variance for the segment that turns runs toward the house, parallel to Rock Street. And on the on the ground that unbalance the benefit to the applicant is significantly strong through that variance to outweigh whatever minor detriments the variance might cause. So I'll make a motion in those terms.
And then let me add, Eric.
Wish to second.
Eric, hold on. Sorry.
Go ahead.
I'm just not sure if I'm muted. Yeah, what about that little portion that is to the west side? Is that not that concerning because it's the small piece?
You mean the opposite, the opposite end of the fence on the other side of the house?
That is correct.
There, yeah, there, the applicant stated at the start of the meeting that that little leg, that right angle there will fall in the rear yard. It will contrary to the drawing here, it will fall on the rear yard side of it will fall behind the house, so will be in the rear yard.
Now I remember the new now I remember the new law and way it's yeah, thank you. I second your motion.
Yeah.
Proving the resolution has amended.
All right, all in favor?
I.
Hi.
Hi.
Everyone's got to unmute at the same. Okay, great. So unanimous vote in favor. Julian, the next step is the board at the next meeting will approve a resolution, which will be the official the official expression of the board's decision. But I will tomorrow I will notify the building department about the decision. So so they'll be aware of it as of tomorrow, but in at our next CBA meeting, we will finalize the actual resolution. And then I'll send you a copy when that's done.
Wonderful. Thank you all very much.
Thank you.
Thank you all very much. Thank you.
You're welcome.
Thank you.
So I make a motion to close the public hearing.
I second that.
I second that.
All in favor?
I.
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 All right, unanimous. So thank you, Julian. Have a great night.
Thank you all again. Much appreciated. Enjoy your evening.
Thank you all again. Much appreciated. Enjoy your evening.
So let's move on to the next item on the agenda, which I added at the start of the meeting, and that's reviewing the new minutes for last the last meeting. Karen, he knows them to us two days ago, I believe. So I'll take a minute. Pause for people to find find the minutes and look over them.
Guess the first item would be just in the introduction to spell out Laura instead of L.
Laura instead of L.
Under new business workshop should be singular workshop for twenty Rock Street.
This is more of a substantive suggestion. The purpose of a workshop is to confirm that a application is really Eric, could you mute your side? Just so hard. It's to confirm that an application is complete, so maybe just a sentence at the end saying that the board confirmed that the application was complete and scheduled the the public hearing.
Do you think that that's an excellent point, but do you think it might be covered by the fact that we make a motion for a public hearing to be held? Because we wouldn't do that if
I guess for for people who know that that's the purpose of a public hearing, then then you're right, that would be understood as the conclusion. I think Eric is frozen.
Headating the public about the process, it would be a good idea to say the board like the board concluded that the application was complete. And then E worth made a motion for a public hearing. Oh, that sentence would have to be modified if that sentence would have to be modified if, if there is something that we still ask. We do ask for photographs, I think. Is there something here about, um, yeah, the board requested photographs of the affected areas, but that's not a, a, an obligatory part of the application. So it's still fair to say the application was complete. All right, I've, I've put that in.
Just out of curiosity, pending receipt of the photographs, because we handled the application without them.
Um, my understanding is we would, if, if the applicant refused, say, say hypothetically, an applicant refused to provide photos, I think we would still, uh, since it's not part of our, uh, requirements, it's not on the form, it's not a requirement, so we would be bound to nevertheless proceed with the hearing. Even about the, the photos. We ask for photos for the, to, it, it, they're in the, it's in the applicant's own interest to provide the photos because they help the board make an educated decision. But they're, they're not mandatory, and the applicant has the option to refuse.
You know, that's interesting, because I was thinking how does one make an educated decision on, on an application without really knowing circumstances that visually would be impactful? Uh, I think they're very helpful unless you do a site visit.
Yeah, I, I agree, but, um, but we actually, I don't think we, there were times when we didn't have any, and, um, but as long as it's not required, and as long as it's not stated in the application, we can't hold it over their heads.
I get it. You know, it's funny, we always used to require them in my recollection. I just didn't know if we had stated it in the application form that we would like them. But, you know, I don't know whether it was, we would specify what we were looking for when we asked for photographs, when we saw what the application involved. But anyway, I, I don't want to labor it. It's just food for thought.
It's a good point. I do want to revise the application in the near future, improve it. There, it, it definitely has some, uh, there's room for improvement there. And at that time, we can discuss making the, um, making photographs mandatory.
Yeah, because I think personally, I would, I would have a very hard time addressing some of these applications, even after doing a site visit that, to refresh my recollection, to go back and look at the photographs. So that's, that's just my point. Uh, other people might think differently.
Yeah.
So I'll let you guys keep going, sorry.
Does anyone else have other corrections?
Eric, I can say I abstained from both of these minutes because I wasn't present on the vote.
Right, yes, exactly. Has everyone read them to, to their satisfaction?
Yes.
Okay. If there are no other changes, then I'll, I'll make a motion that we approve the minutes as a minute.
I'll second that.
All in favor?
I.
Hi.
John, do you have a vote? Oh, you're abstaining, sorry, of course. Um, great, so unanimous, uh, with one abstention. Um, any other business? That's all I have.
Again, thank you, Eric, for putting everything together and being the three ring circus master. Good to see everybody again.
Great, thanks.
Yeah.
To see you. Good to see everybody.
Will someone make a motion to close the meeting?
I'll make a motion to close the meeting.
Second.
All in favor?
I.
Hi.
Hi.
Good night, everybody.
Good night.
Thank you, Karen.
Hi.
Good night. No echo.